And it's turning into disaster. They want people here, they want... That was Scott Mills on someone's monitor. I go, "Scott, when we start turning a little bit of a pocket, fine, but in the meanwhile, it'll be stamped as, you know, as possible." The department is being shorthanded right now. Anyway, I go, "Sir, you're not gonna have them when they're all climbing watching. You guys have to please yourselves." But hopefully, we hammer that a lot. It could be any meeting in a couple of weeks.
We don't need that.
Picture goes flying for me. They have lots.
That's new.
You know, like your skate, you know, like roller skates have that piece.
We don't need that. It would not be cool.
Okay, now.
Jac, you good? Ryan, you good?
I'm good.
Did Ryan hear you?
He did. He said something. He'll use a good...
Oh, okay. 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 Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the September 19th, 2023 meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and at the date, time, and location of the meeting will include in the meeting schedule. Post on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and file in the office of the Borough Clerk. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any other relevant documents can be found on the Borough's website. Attach the meeting notice posted in the news and announcement section. During the meeting, announcements will be made prior to the two public comment periods. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon, and anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mayor Spango.
Present.
Mr. Vardy.
Here.
Mrs. Fishman.
Here.
Mr. Frida. Mrs. Parati. Mrs. Toley.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Please rise to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. First on our agenda tonight is our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon, and if you're with us by telephone, press star nine. Ryan? If you don't mind, I would like to do the presentation. We have two presentations tonight. First one, it's going to be with seniors. First, we have Evan Stewart-Marshall, who was the second place recipient of the professional acrylic category in the 2023 Essex County Senior Citizens Jury Art Show for his piece Spectacle. And every year, Councilman Fishman and I, well, that's our employer, we look, and I think this is the first time in the five years that we've been here at some of the Roseland. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
About it, and then we'll take a few pictures.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna bring your piece over here.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for this wonderful honor. I love living in Roseland, and I'm delighted to be one of the first people in a while to win an award from Roseland. This is the, for people who don't know, this is the Essex County Senior Art Show. And people from all Essex County towns enter, and then the winners, the first place winners go down to the state. So I'm just very honored to be here. I'm a mixed media abstract artist. This is one of my recent ones. And I'm very honored and gratified that it was appreciated. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Do you get the key back? The painting? Yes.
I have to bring it back to another show.
You get to keep it when it's done.
Oh, yeah?
The painting? Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah, nice.
Thank you very much.
If you want to bring your family up, if you hold the painting, we'll take a picture over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats. Take that fight over before it's sunny. Yes, we have, right here.
Right here.
Proclamation. Sorry. Thank you. It seems to be becoming an annual tradition. We have the, our recognition of our platinum sponsor for our 2023 Roseland Concert Series, Tom O'Byrne. Tom, if you'd come up, please. It seemed like I've introduced Tom more than introduced anyone else over the last three or four months, but we started the concert series in 2019. I think we've had a total of, we had 20 concerts? Two, four, seven. We have had about 15 concerts. These concerts are, are, everything that goes into these concerts, from paying for the bands, to paying for the stage, to paying for food vendors, to paying incidentals, to paying for mailers, is 100% no cost to the taxpayer, and it's because of people like Tom. Tom comes through every year. He's the first one there to help us. He's the first one there to bring a check over, but it doesn't just stop with the concert series. I'll give an example. Two years ago, we had an issue with the brook in Bond Force, and we had all these ideas we wanted to do, and Tom said, "Let me get a group of people to come help you." So Tom got a group of people to come help us rebuild the brook, and it's actually beautiful to bank. It's actually something that people like to go look at. But the most amazing thing is Tom just didn't get the people to help us. He showed up and Tom was on the back. I mean, he gets his hands dirty, and he's always there for us. I can't say enough nice things about him. So we thank you again, Tom. You can put this with the rest of your collection, and we hope to have you up here next year again.
So too, Mayor. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. The second summer concert, I gave a shout out to the person who had picked the dates for the shows because the weather was just so spectacular. When I came down off the stage, Mayor Spango said to me, "I hope you didn't just jinx us." And of course, we all know what happened with the last concert, so I regret saying that. I do want to thank the mayor, the Borough Council, the Recreation Department, the DPW, and the Police Department for the wonderful banners and those great signboards on Eagle Rock Avenue and Harrison Avenue. When the schedule comes out at the beginning of the summer for the shows, you look at that last concert and you say, "Boy, that's so far away," and in a blink of an eye, it's here and gone. And you say, "Well, I'll see you next year," but I'm lucky enough to say, "You know what? I'll see you around town next week." And I thank you, Roseland, for being the greatest community in the world, and I am so proud to be a part of it.
Thank you.
One nice thing Tom said is that one of the concerts, I don't know which one it was, he said to me, "I was at PNC Art Center the other night for the concert. I paid a lot for those tickets, and this band is better than what I thought."
Thank you.
I know his time is valuable because if you think we do a lot of stuff, the county does even more, so I'll bring up the Director of Parks and Recreation, Dan Salvati. I'm sure he's gonna bring greetings.
Evening, Mayor and Councilman. Greenfield County Executive, DeFensenzo. Busy month coming up here in Essex County. On this Saturday, September 23rd, is our family festival at the Environmental Center. That's from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. First week of October, this is a big one, Tuesday, October 3rd, the Essex County Senior Wellness will take place at Cody Arena. That's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's on October 3rd. Computer Electronics Recycling Day takes place on October 21st from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. That's over on Bradford Avenue, 99 Bradford Avenue. On top of that, we go right into our Halloween program, starting on October 20th. Gardens of Glove will take place in Montclair from the hours of 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. In addition, forget about Four Legged Friends, our dog events, our Strut Your Mutt will take place in Branchford Park in the morning at 9:00 a.m. on the 21st of October, rain date of the 22nd, and then we'll be in Brookdale on the 28th in Grover Cleveland in the afternoon with rain dates of the 29th. And of course, I know, Mayor, you're looking forward to this one. It's come trick-or-treating at Turtleback Zoo, which will take place on the 31st from the hours of 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And there's a small fee of $5 a mission, and there are safe candy stations inside the zoo. Questions, concerns, anything to take back from the county?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
There you go.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Going in reverse order. Now we'll have our tax bill presentation by Councilman Vardy.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
You have to go sit in the one.
If you'd like. This will be, this will be brief. So the tax bills went out a little less than a month ago, so you definitely already received them, but the good news in the tax bill is that everyone's tax bill in Roseland went down this year because of some favorability in the various budgets. So we'll take you through that in a second, but just to recap how we calculate the taxes, right? So you take basically our total appropriations, you subtract the revenue from the library tax, that gives us the amount that we have to raise by taxation. You then take that, you divide it by our annual assessed, our assessed valuation in the town, and that gives us our tax rate for the municipality. And then what does that really mean? So from there, the, if you look at, apply that tax rate, that gives us, in the borough, gave us a 1.47% increase, which was $41, on average, $41 a household. And the municipal tax on an average house in Roseland is just under $3,000, so 2,092572. The how our tax, how everything is spent, this is just a breakdown here, you know, between municipal taxes, regional taxes, county, local school taxes, and Noecker, open space, and then library taxes. The, for Noecker, their numbers came in at an increase of 2.61% for next year, for this year, I'm sorry. The West Essex Regional actually was a decrease of 1.77%. This was based on Roseland's, Roseland's portion of that bill, that, and that does change every year due to the, due to our assessed and appropriate equalization rate, I'm sorry. The, the West Essex Regional budget allocations here, you could see Roseland, like I said, went down 1.66, but you can see where we, where we, where our share is about 21% out of the towns. Essex County went down 5.927%, which was a large decrease for 2023, once again, based on, based on our appropriations and the equalization rate. And then if you look just overall, like we were saying, the overall taxes went down by 0.02% across the average tax bill. And the average house in Roseland saw a decrease of $96.67. So that's what the same services that we all enjoy here and the same quality that we've been, we've had for many years. So it's a, it's a good thing to see the bill go down once in a while. And that's all we have. That'll, and like I said, that bill was mailed about a little less than a month ago. So thank you.
Questions, concerns, comments from the council? Hearing and seeing none. First on the agenda, we have ordinance 24-23, correct, Jac?
No, it's 20.
20, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I misread. 20-23. Can you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland to repeal ordinance number 13-2023 entitled, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Parks and Recreation, adding new Section 14-5 entitled Use of Pickleball Courts, and to repeal ordinance number 16-2023 entitled, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Parks and Recreation, amending Section 14-5 entitled Use of Pickleball Courts.
We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 20-2023? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Vardy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland to repeal ordinance number 13-2023 entitled, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Parks and Recreation, adding new Section 14-5 entitled Use of Pickleball Courts, and to repeal ordinance number 16-2023 entitled, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Parks and Recreation, amending Section 14-5 entitled Use of Pickleball Courts.
We have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
I just want to clarify so that everyone understands, this is ordinance 20, and then this is ordinance 24.
Yes, yes.
Right, but if you adopt 20, 24 isn't going to be right because now you've taken out all of 20. So I think what your intention was, that you were gonna vote down 20 and then move to adoption 24 because that's the one that, at least from the last meeting, that's the one that I understood you wanted because that's the one that removed the beach residents, but leaves the beach there.
24 leaves, let's clarify, let's back up a step because this is a repeal here.
Right, but that takes it all away.
Okay, let's go back. The 20, the 24, 24 ordinance, not 20, not number 20, is the one that has no fee for the resident and has the $200 fee for out of town.
Exactly, and it has the language, you took out the employer, being an exemption that's rest, it's strictly a true resident.
The reason I'll confuse is because this ordinance on the top says 2324, and this is 20. So ordinance 20-2023 is the one with the language that we want to repeal, correct?
Yes, that's repealing both of the prior pickleball ordinances in their entirety. So if you want to wipe out all of the pickleball ordinances, you would adopt 20.
We don't want to adopt 20, so.
But we're not adopting 20. We're voting on...
No, we're about to have a motion to adopt that.
Well, you're about to have a motion to...
To repeal 20, I thought.
No, no. We're not adopting 20. We do not want to adopt this. This is not, this does not have the language. It got kind of confusing because of the way it played out.
It was timing, and it was timing because you had already introduced 20, and then there wasn't a meeting to adopt it before you needed to introduce it.
Oh, I thought we were repealing the old one on one vote and then approving the new one on the next vote, but okay.
For clarity.
Yeah.
If I call for a motion to adopt and no one makes moves.
It dies.
It dies.
Got it. So can we reset?
No.
Oh, you just called me.
We don't have an adoption.
All right, good.
Do we have a motion to adopt? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance 23 is not adopted.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance... Jac, I have 21. You have...
Should be 21.
21, the pole installation.
At the top of here, I have ordinance...
I confused you by adding that comment at the top of the last one. That was 20. This is 21.
21, thank you. Okay, just making sure. Ordinance 21, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance establishing a new Chapter 19, Section 22 entitled Public Utilities, Construction, and Pole Installation Replacement.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, Vardy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 21-2023? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance establishing a new Chapter 19, Section 22 entitled Public Utilities, Construction, and Pole Installation Replacement.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Vardy, Fishman, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Vardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-2023 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 23-2023. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Department of Administration, amending subsection 2-34 entitled Recreation Coordinator, and adding new section 2-36 entitled Recreation Coordinator.
We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 23-2023? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title.
Get to close the hearing.
I'm sorry. If not, may I have a motion? Well, close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland titled Department of Administration, amending subsection 2-34 entitled Recreation Coordinator, and adding new subsection 2-36 entitled Recreation Coordinator.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Fishman, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Vardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-2023 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Next on the agenda, we have ordinance 24-2023. Déjà vu, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Parks and Recreation, amending Section 14-5 entitled Use of Pickleball Courts.
Do we have a motion to open the public?
So moved.
Second.
Vardy, Toley, I think, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 24-2023?
Uh-oh.
It's good. It's my honesty. It's good.
If that's no 20 meter court, even my voice, but I had to say thank you very much because you know how much I oppose the original ordinance, and this really helps the citizens of Roseland because I believe in free recreation, you know, but as long as the outsiders pay, fine. I would have made it higher.
Maybe next year, maybe next year.
Thank you. I think the citizens, thank you. All right. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Give your input. Anyone else wish to be heard on ordinance 24-2023? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Parks and Recreation, amending Section 14-5 entitled Use of Pickleball Courts.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 24-2023?
So moved.
Second.
Vardy, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Vardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-2023 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 282-2023, the September 15th, 2023 bill list. Everyone receive the bill list for questions, concerns, recusals. Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the bill list?
So moved. Second.
Vardy, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Next, we have Resolutions 1 through 10 on the agenda of our Resolution Number 283-2023 through 292-2023. I'd like to move them together. Questions, concerns, recusals on any of these resolutions? If we have none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Trillo, Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Ryan, I thought you were trying to turn me off. Next, we have the consent agenda, three items. For number three, it just should be noted, something else nice for our little town, at the League of Municipalities in November, there's a number of, there's a expo floor, which has a number of things, the Public Works trucks that will be highlighted and featured will be our Public Works trucks at the League of Municipalities. So that's like, Chris Gritchett put that together, and we're honored to be the feature vehicle, so, and our new logo, too. Question, concerns about the consent agenda? If there are none, we can have a motion to adopt.
I just have a question. Pearls of Wisdom, where's the raffle? Or who's the four? Or what is it?
I have it right here.
Anybody know?
It should be on site.
Can't remember. They actually processed that. They did this last year or the year before. They're just, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't recall what they do. It's a, they raise money for, it's a humans organization, I believe, but I'm not 100% sure. But they're holding the raffle in Roseland, so they have to give it once.
Residents can participate.
Any other questions, concerns? Not, we have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Vardy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mayor's report, the only thing that I'm going to speak on, which we've had a number of meetings, is October 7th, Roseland Day, which is at Bond Force this year, along with the bonfire, which is going to be a little bit smaller, but there's a lot of great activities. We kind of reallocated some funding, so there's more activities for the kids. There's going to be a number of, there's going to be a cornhole tournament for the adults, movie night, bonfire, all that, but we really put a lot of effort into some new activities for the kids this year, so really encourage the families and all residents to come out, but it's going to be a little extra special for the young ones this year, which is going to be nice. We're looking forward to it. I'm sure Councilman Toley will cover the other things coming up. Besides that, I have nothing. Committee reports?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one announcement, we have, in addition to having Roseland TV on the, you know, on the FiOS and Comcast stations, we also broadcast our council meetings and concerts, and we'll do the, we'll do the Christmas Storytime and other events on an app, local BTV. Ryan has it on the website. It's and Roseland TV is channel 75.8, and it's free. So you can put it on a browser, you can put it on your phone, put it on an iPad, and you could watch all the, the same, the same content that's on the Borough TV station is on the app. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilman Frida's not with us, Councilman Toley or, or actually, Councilman Parati's not with us, so we have anything to add?
Well, the fire department had the, they were participated in the Fireman's Convention in Wildwood this past weekend, and they saw a lot of new equipment and trucks and exhibitions, and they said it went very well.
I covered public safety, too.
No, I think we're good. Stay safe, locking cars.
Anything on public safety? I know Councilman Parati's probably eating some really good food right now.
Another thing I'd like to say, it's our block party ordinance was put to test this year again, and the upgrades we've made were tremendous, and everything went very well, especially the street it was on, so it was a success.
That was, that was, compared to last year, it was a lot of hard work by you, and thank you because it worked well for people who were in favor and people who weren't in favor of the block party, so it was, everyone was, was happy.
I had no phone calls Monday morning.
It was a good Monday morning.
Recreation, Councilman Trillo?
Everything is underway for the fall. This Saturday, we have our Run for Roseland and our Junior Olympics. Everything's at Bond Force, I believe. It's kind of like a warm-up for Roseland Day, but soccer's in full swing. We're making good use of the facilities. We're using every piece of grass, I think, that the town owns for the next several months, but it's all holding up, so we're in good shape. Uh, but it's all holding up, so, uh, we're in good shape.
And to speak to that, the, the residents that are in the Fernwood area have been very patient understanding of us using their fields more than normal. And later, we sent a letter in there letting them know that this is temporary, but they've been good neighbors and understood that we're kind of, everyone has to understand this year until we get all our fields back up. So they, they've been very, very accommodating, which is good news.
Uh, and otherwise, you guys saw the, we've broken ground on everything and they did a whole lot. It looked great because there was so much work done in like, you know, two days. They clear, demolition always looks so great, but now you're not going to really see anything change for the next several months because everything goes in the ground or whatever else. So don't get, you know, too down. And I believe the pickleball court at Tedesco is open for business?
It will be open soon as they get clearance from the engineer. Everything is cured and nothing's going to, there's no divots are going to form, and then we're good to go, so.
All right, well, it looks great again, and I'm looking forward for that to open up. No lights on that one, so there should be a little more, uh, cordial behavior there. Oh, and kickball, our much anticipated kickball season, which has become the official sport of Roseland apparently, um, will open up on Friday night. Uh, the grownups will be playing at Fernwood Field, and the little guys will be playing on Colletti Court.
For the grownups, I'm sure the Medi Center will do great business.
It's a good season for the Medi Center, yes. That's all I have.
Redevelopment Legal, Councilman Fishman.
Uh, first, I want to say congratulations, Councilman Barty, on the tax presentation, really. Uh, the fact that there's a reduction is wonderful, but it's all due to hard work that we do in the beginning of each year, the end of the year, and the beginning of the next, uh, to make sure that, um, we get things as low as we possibly can and, uh, yet have everything workable, workable numbers so that we can do everything we need to do to keep the town up and, uh, have all services that the residents require and enjoy, actually. So, um, that's really very positive. Uh, for me, in, in terms of redevelopment, you will be seeing, or you are seeing, some, uh, raising of buildings on South Livingston Avenue. Uh, in a little while, you will see some other things going on there. Um, and that's all part of our, uh, fair share housing obligation, and that was predetermined or decided upon, I think, six years ago, actually, um, before most of us were here, um, up here on the council. But that's just the first project. And as you may know, we have other developments, uh, that will be coming online, um, hopefully in the next year and a half or two years. So we will be seeing things. Um, Danny, uh, spoke about the senior wellness program that the county is having on October 3rd. The, um, that is an outstanding program. There are between 2,000 and 3,000 seniors who come to Cody Arena from all over the county, and, um, they are, uh, they're given lunch. But in addition to that, there are different kinds of programs and tabling, um, so that people can give out all information of what, uh, the county offers. It's great for all seniors and, um, the senior, you know, as many should attend as possible. And for, um, our senior society, on, uh, September 22nd, which is this Friday, we will begin our balance classes, and, uh, they will be Fridays at 10 o'clock. And, um, also, our next, uh, major event will be in our Oktoberfest luncheon, which is on October 13th at the Black Forest Inn in Stanhope. And I look forward to seeing many of the seniors there that day. It was a fun event last year, and hopefully it will be equally fun this year.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Community Outreach and Shared Services, Councilman Tolly?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, quite a few things happening this weekend. Um, some we've already mentioned. The Roseland Greek Fest begins on Friday. It will run Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There will be a $2 admission, and we have a free parking shuttle service, again, like they did in previous years. 56 Livingston Avenue, Lot B, you can park your car there, and there will be a shuttle bus that will bring you back and forth. Some of the entertainment, uh, there will be music by Fantasia, traditional Greek dancing featuring the Hellenic dancers of New Jersey and Goyans of Roseland and Randolph. There will be church tours, cooking demonstrations, kids' games. There will be food, they will have food there, and there'll also be takeout food available. And there will be other live Greek entertainment. I guess Opa, Opa, dancing, whatever they're doing.